All right, it's Monday, June 16th, 2025, 10 o'clock, regular session of the Board of Supervisors. First item is the agenda and the minutes of the June 9th.
I move to approve both.
Motion.
Okay.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda and minutes presented. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Probably comments on agenda items? Uh, seems none or hearing none. Move on to county auditor for claims.
Claim prepared in front of you, sir.
So, give a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. Any further comment there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes any payroll?
No payroll, sir.
Drainage?
Not yet.
There will be though probably, huh? Okay, so we're on item number four. Mr. Auditor?
Uh, these are the annual 12-month permit for tobacco cigarette permits for Diamond Oak, Pine Creek Golf Course, and Pure Pleasure. Everything is in order.
Your permit's another second.
Motion and a second to approve the three permits as presented by the auditor. Any further comment? All in favor? I, I move to passes. Item number five, uh, proving the clerk's monthly report of fees.
I move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the clerk's fees as presented. Any further comment there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, the next three items, six, seven, and eight, uh, are applications for fireworks. Michelle?
Yeah, everything is in order for all three insurance requirements, et cetera. Thank you.
Six, seven, and eight.
All set.
Motion is second to approve items six, seven, and eight pertaining to fireworks. Uh, everything being in order. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Uh, item number nine was manure management and everything looked like there was no change, pretty much. Motion is second to approve manure management and four down the DNR is presented. Any further comment there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, we are on item number 10. County engineer.
Good morning. Morning. So, the rain that we had come through on Friday, we had two culverts up in the northeast corner of the county that took a fair amount of damage. It wasn't because anything went wrong. They just filled to their capacity and overflowed the road and then erosion happens when, when that occurs. But we got those, we had pictures and we, whenever something like that happened, we'd take pictures and record how much material that we, uh, used to fix it and then we put it into a work order just so we have record of it in case, you know, anything goes to a bigger event than it was. Doesn't seem like it's going to be there, but we recorded it anyway. Other than that, we had about five or six spots that we had to water the road where we lost gravel. Think we put about 15 loads of gravel out to, to correct that so the roads were passable. But that was the excitement from Friday. We get a little bit of the rain over the weekend, but it didn't do anything to any of the culverts. Everything seemed to handle it fine. And we'll see what happens today. Uh, sounds like we have one culvert that might have washed full of some debris that we need to, to look at, or several culverts in an area. So, that's really what we're going to be chasing a lot today is to see what got kind of screwed up from that gusher on Friday. Most of the time that causes a lot of material flow into this, into the streams. Then they inevitably clog into our culverts and bridges. So, we'll be chasing that a lot today. The, the main thing.
What are the guys in the shop? Why am I daylight today or?
Uh, well, some of them are doing repairs and that kind of stuff. Well, some other ones are going around checking the various drainage structures I've had issues with in the past just to see if they're becoming clogged or we have any other issues out there. So, it's kind of a, a monitoring and reaction time when we have heavier rains coming like this.
Will you double check the, the back part of the lake where we, the speed limit was reduced?
Yeah.
Put those more flags and law enforcement just said that's picked up again. And just double check that we have adequate signage?
Yeah.
And make sure there's probably a rule of thumb, but if for some reason you think it might be lacking, um, and it's appropriate, I guess we report back if we should put any more signage up.
Yeah, or at least make it more visible somehow.
And honestly, I'm just passing it along to you. Maybe it makes sense for you to visit with the sheriff.
Yeah.
If he has any feedback and.
Yeah.
Specific area that you know that better than I do, I'm just reporting it back.
I'll do that. So, we, our one grader that had the heads taken off is now back together and we have that back. So, other than that, I think all our equipment is up and running at this point. Uh, our project is complete out there. Updated projects, so there's no more nuances out there. We're just doing our closure process on that. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
We have with the fairgrounds.
Well, we're arranging it with Mark to get the other 10 loads out there. Uh, we're, I talked, I talked over with Carl and he got the documentation he needed to feel comfortable with us progressing with, with everything we agreed to. So, we'll get that done this week if there's a time that works out to get coordinated with Mark.
Do you have any other big things right now?
Not at the moment. Everything is kind of waiting to start or in the planning process still. I mean, we got a culvert, a couple of culverts we were going to do this week, but looking at the rain, we're not going to start that till the, the forecast calms down a little bit just so we don't get, open a hole that turns into a bigger issue. So, yeah, we have, a lot of our stuff's on hold at the moment just waiting for weather to kind of straighten out.
Seems so. Nobody got anything else? You want to move on to item number 11?
Yes. So, this is for the road closure near the airport for their event. Uh, Mark graciously agreed to come in and ask or talk to you guys about any questions you had and kind of talk about the event just to make sure you're comfortable with that closure and why it's required to have that road closed during the event.
Got a, I have a show here.
Did we, uh, talk about the road?
We talked about it last week.
Yeah. It'll all be on the agenda next week. All right.
Uh, this event is a, a new one for Mason City. Uh, it's a, a aerobatics competition. It's, uh, put on by the International Aerobatics Club. This is a regional qualifier event. Uh, what this is, is this is pilots, uh, doing stunt maneuvers for a competition. It's not an airshow, uh, in the sense that there's no crowd. There's no, it's really not open to the public. It is a competition among the pilots. Uh, the map you have here shows the aerobatic box that they will be operating their aircraft in, and they won't be all the way down on the deck. They'll be up higher in the air, but this is a safety box that they're required to have by the FAA to have this event. And as you can see, the, the dead end portion of 275th Street that ends at the airport property uh, just catches underneath the edge of this box. And so, they have requested that we are trying to close that road limited just so that we don't have anybody that's a non-participant, uh, in that area just for safety purposes. I have reached out to the two other property owners that have access off of that road, uh, Pam Pitkin and, uh, Brenda, uh, Witchman, I believe is pronounced. Um, both of them didn't have any issue with, with that being closed. They said, you know, this is September 4th through September 7th. They said most of the spraying and crop work will be done at that point. They won't be harvesting yet. So, they didn't see any issue with that. They both have cut my contact information. Uh, if they did need to get into there for any reason, but, um, we are just requesting that we can barricade that section of road off just for those four days during the event. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Did you play last week the?
Yeah, looking, but I think it's part of the airport property.
Yeah. It's all ours.
So, we'll jump on the other end.
Uh, since it's a dead end, we just put it at the, at the beginning of the road, just say road closure through traffic and, and just have it done.
I move to close, close the road as, uh, as presented.
All set.
Now, we have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the closure as presented in item number 11. Any further comment?
I'd just like to, uh, ask, is there a reason we need to keep that road and not give it to the airport?
I don't want it. So, if they can have it, if, if they wanted to.
I mean, there's access, people have access for farms, right?
There is farm access off of that road.
Yes, farm access within, people have to have access within your gate too, right?
Uh, the farms that are accessed off of this road are not accessed through our gate, no.
Okay, but you do have farms on the inside of your gate too where people farm.
We do, but they don't use this road for access. Our, our fence is all the way at the, the far east end of that where that road ends at our property line.
If there was a way to get rid of the road completely, I'd support it too. That's another issue, so.
You can pursue that one.
Yeah. We can look into what we can do for drive-by arrangements and everything else for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, Brandon, item number 12?
Okay, so this is for the block party that, uh, they have periodically, um, sell short down there for the lending closure that we talked about last week. They did acquire the required permits to planning and zoning. So, my suggestion would be that you guys give me the permission to work with them as long as they agree with my restrictions on the closure. They should allow me to close the road for that, uh, party. My restrictions are going to be, uh, make sure to maintain access for anybody that's inside, that they can leave and come as they need to for emergencies, or they work with them to help with the compromise that both parties agree to. And I, I just want to make sure that nobody is locked in that doesn't want to be locked in for this. So, make sure if there's a medical emergency or whatever that they can get out or services can get into them.
What the letter that you put together, Tom and Michelle, so to say, uh, has he acknowledged that yet?
This is acknowledged by.
Has he acknowledged?
Acknowledged.
Yeah.
We got the letter.
What, what is expected of him?
No.
I, I've talked with him a bit about having, making sure that, uh, some of the concerned residents have either a very close parking spot in an adjacent street or something else worked out with him. And he, he seemed to have a plan, but he hasn't given me the exact details if everybody agreed yet or not. But as long as we can get a plan worked out where it seems feasible that people are able to maintain the access that they need, I would say, I would request the board give me permission to work with them to, to allow this road closure.
Who to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the closure as presented, uh, for the town there?
There's a permit came through zoning, planning and zoning for this.
Yes.
What's your planning and zoning's recommendation?
Permit.
Okay.
Okay. Our, uh, what? Our difficulty. I guess that's on you guys too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 13 is a closed session. We're going to go into closed session pursuant to our code section 21.5. One, we can discuss, agree with legal counsel in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disvanish the position of the governmental body in that litigation. So.
How is this off? I'm going to approve to go into closed session.
Second. Motion and second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Yeah, they call it real at all.
Now then.
Yes.
Do you have?
Yes.
What's?
Yes.
Now stop. Now stop.
I wanted to talk to him afterwards. I didn't know if he was waiting to be, if he'd just come back in.